I hereby announce that this meeting is being held in accordance with Chapter 231 of the Old Republic Meeting Act. Proper members of meeting dates has been given to the Morris Newsweek and the Morris County Daily Record and posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate in a judicial hearing must be maintained without offense. Karen, roll call please.
Mr. Ortonblatt?
President.
Mr. Wal?
Here.
Mr. Bezos?
Mrs. Stedder?
Present.
Mr. Houston?
Here.
Mayor Carr?
President.
Mrs. McCloskey?
Here.
And Mr. Bubakir?
President.
And I would state that Mr. Brewer here is our attorney. Kate, can you hear me? Kate Keller is here as our planner, and William Rogers for engineer. Is he coming across?
Yeah. Okay, Karen? Good? Okay. So before we start, and I know John's not here, I want to thank Mr. Bezos all for stepping in and running the meeting. It appears pretty well. So again, just want to publicly. First item on the agenda are the approval of meeting minutes from June 16th of 2025. Each of the board members should have received a copy of the minutes. Does anyone have any additions or corrections from those minutes?
On page 372, the whole business. Just above where it says these two applications, I think it should say specific to each. Specific to each, and a Morris Plan Zoning Board Adjustment should be application or checklist for variance relief. Is there something there or not? So, Mr. Mayor, you're saying about three quarters of the way down, you said it starts at these two applications, you're saying the sentence before that?
Correct.
Okay, and what's your, what's your?
Morris Plan Zoning Board Adjustment Application for variance relief and a checklist. I should agree to it. It's open ended there.
I believe there is two applications.
You're, you're, I think what you're doing, you're correct in saying the application for variance relief, but the question is whether or not, that's what I asked you to say.
Yeah, is that what, is that the meaning of that there?
It is the meaning. Correct. So we should add an application? I don't, I don't have a problem adding more applications.
Or whatever word you choose.
Sure. I don't, I don't have a problem adding more applications after Morris Plan Zoning Board Adjustment Applications for variance relief and checklist specific to this.
Yeah, something will.
I don't have a problem with that.
Do you see what I mean, Karen?
Yes, just say the board application.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have the motion?
No, I have correction.
Oh, you have one too?
Yep. On page 379. And the paragraph is, well, five paragraphs down, this Keller replied, or it is a section in the state statute, as you get to the end of that, it says, this Keller stated the borough has to provide for a realistic opportunity for 10 new units. Seven of these units are through, it is not support of housing, it's supportive housing.
Is that it for the meeting minutes? Just, just to be, just to be clear to Jason, back to your point, because I had written some notes just for clarity, let me, let me just make sure that this is the right statement. Actually, let me trigger that, let me, let me cover that later. So do we have a motion with the corrections to the previous minutes?
So motion.
Is that, is that what you're saying, Karen?
Yeah, your, your comments.
So.
Okay. All, all in favor? Can I get a voice move?
We have some people who aren't here. People who aren't here tonight.
Yes, and then Mr. Bubakir is present, and Mrs. Stedder is present. Okay? Go all in favor.
Aye.
Karen, roll call.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is comments from the public. This is specifically for matters that are not on the next agenda.
Kate Katz, 17 on the Wild Drive. I'm here inquiring about the message received to the written response that Mr. Ron Kelly received from Mr. Brewer, that he would be eligible to be reappointed to his spot on the planning board if he were to leave his position at the community center, and I wanted to know if there's any further details on that.
I haven't heard from Mr. Kelly, but the board doesn't do the appointments, the board wouldn't have appointments. They receive appointments, they put out, but they don't do the appointments, they can't take people off, so there wouldn't be any volunteer for anything, but I do not do that.
Okay. Mayor Carr, would you be inclined to invite Mr. Kelly to be reappointed if he leaves his job at the community center?
Yeah, I've stated that previously, if council meetings in planning board, I have no problem with Mr. Kelly for having none. Simply a matter of company.
And is there an estimated timeline for that, or would that invitation take place prior to the next planning board meeting?
I have told him Mr. Kelly, and he has also emailed Mr. Kelly, and he has not given a response.
Okay. What is the timeline? Because I'm sure there's concern for he leaves his job and then is invited, is eligible but is not reinvited. Like, I'm sure there's a concern of, you know, how much time in between leaving the position to, like, reinvitation. I'm thinking it is me.
I think it targets a lot of hypotheticals. I don't know, there's a lot of moves. If I was John Moran and I was the borough council, I'd advise him, it's just hypothetically, you know, there is, he's been given, you know, it's clear, he's been given the opinion. If he was no longer employed and, and otherwise meets the qualifications, which he did before, then he would be something, they would be eligible to be reappointed. That's completely up to him. So, and I don't.
Excuse me, I'd like to say, but you're starting to go off.
He not speaking into the speaker. It's the timing that could even be a hypothetical start to that, to tell him Mr. Kelly, and then after that is how, and boards can go for quite a while without having a full complement that happens, you know, that's why you have alternates and things, but that first timing is with Mr. Kelly. And I don't know that he is going to anyway. I don't want to speak.
Yeah, no, that's fair. If down the road, I don't understand how all of this works with the classification of each number, but if down the road he were to decide, say he's reappointed, and he were to decide, you know, I would like to be employed by the borough again, is there an opportunity for him to shift classes so that he would be eligible to, you know, take an open spot at the community center if he's eligible?
Again, that's a big hypothetical. There are various members that can be employed, cannot be employed, if there are other people that fit that, that are in that slot, it wouldn't be possible. I'm, I'm giving very hypotheticals.
I know, I know.
Governing bodies.
We're just try, I'm trying to understand the process, it's all very obvious, so.
I'm gonna take a pause, you'll allow me to just talk.
Sure, Kate Katz. Yes, I do. [inaudible]. [inaudible]. There's a bunch of random people chatting, so I don't know where they are. [inaudible]. 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 Test, Karen, test.
Test, test, test.
Very good, I hear you. Nice to hear.
Test, 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 test. One, two, one, two, one, two, here. Good.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sorry if you're watching.
Are you finished? You need me to review? That's trying to bear pressure now.
Well, I have to, is I know that there was discussion on Mr. Kelly, and I will call Mr. Brewer to bet the finals do not have what's going on, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll close this part of the agenda. Committee reports, any updates on the minor site plan committee?
No.
No?
No.
Updates on the master plan review committee?
No.
Okay, I'll close this portion of the agenda. Correspondence and bills, Karen, are there correspondences and bills?
Yes, there are.
No correspondence, but Mr. Ortonblatt has the bills.
Excellent. Purchase order 20251111, Phillips Price and Braggout, general services for $165 on June 24th. Purchase order 22, excuse me, 20251110, Phillips Price and Braggout, affordable housing invoice And purchase order 20251412 for Phillips Price and Braggout, affordable housing again, $2,625 on August 4th. A packet here, forgive me, I'm doing two months of bills. Purchase order 20251490, Mayor Zeeke Falcon LLP, legal services on August 13th, $475.50. Purchase order 20251489, Mayor Zeeke Falcon LLP, legal services on August 13th, $7,630. Purchase order 20251286, Mayor Zeeke Falcon LLP, legal services, $1,085. Almost done. Purchase order 20251287 for Mayor Zeeke Falcon on, I'm sorry, I don't say the date on all these, might not be consistent, June 16th for $840. Purchase order 20251285, Mayor Zeeke Falcon, McDonald's litigation on July 16th, $2,135. And last, purchase order 20251109, Mayor Zeeke Falcon on June 24th, McDonald's litigation, Do I have approval for these bills?
Well, you usually make the motion, you make.
I motion that these be approved. Does anyone second?
Second.
Karen, roll call.
All right. Mr. Ortonblatt?
Yes.
Mr. Wal?
Yes.
Mrs. Stedder?
Yes.
Mr. Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. McCloskey?
Yes.
And Mr. Bubakir?
Yes.
Next on the agenda are applications which there are none at this time. I'll close this portion of the agenda. Old Business, Mr. Brewer, you want to?
Sure. If you give a brief, non-privileged, just update on the fall's litigation, Lee Wang and applicant, or objectors' challenge, actually by the board, director of the board, solely director of this decision, or justified of this decision. In this case, the, the objectors have filed a motion to amend the complaint and to take discovery, which we want in petitions and do some paper discovery to expand the record, on the grounds that there were most invalid members of the board that's been opposed. The court was scheduled to decide that last Friday, it didn't, so it's a big waiting game. If the court rans that motion, or do it delay, in this particular case, if the court denies the motion and says, no, this is the regular, or under action, there is a case not put in conference on August 28th, and some dates will be set, but I have no updates for you, nothing confidential to tell you, other than that's just, that's, that's, that's really hard, and then wait.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, under Old Business, this is comments from the board regarding the application process that Mr. Houston provided some initial information on in June. Not being there, I want to provide some context, just to make sure that we're covering everything. So first, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Schultz, Mr. Houston and myself have been working on this application. Our goal overall was to simplify the document embodying all of the necessary items needed between zoning requirements and planning board requirements, as well as provide a simpler form for the applicant's admission. The two documents that were sent to all of you contain all the same requirements as is in the current document, however, the information, in my opinion, is better organized and more easy to understand from an overall applicant perspective. And then getting back to Jason, what you had said in the notes, just a clarifying piece for the entire team. A Morris Plan's Planning Board or Zoning Board Adjustment Application for subdivision and Site Plan Review, along with a checklist specific for each of those was created. And then two, a Morris Plan Zoning Board Adjustment Application for variance relief and an associated checklist was created for that as well. So there's actually two sets of documents. So at this time, I'll ask the board for input based on review. If you have no input, that's fine, but I guess, Mr. Ortonblatt, I'll start down with you.
I just want to know whether the Board of Adjustments has had a chance to look at their, their, their full parables before.
They have, they have, and I believe, Karen, actually, correct me if I'm wrong, that was in May or June?
June.
So those, yeah, those, and those notes are available, so if you wanted to see some of the detail of that discussion.
But this is a green light from the Board of Adjustments at the moment?
It is a green, yeah.
I just spoke to Dave tonight, he just happened to be walking by when I was getting out of my car, and he said, no, he said, they have not decided on anything concrete, they're still reviewing it, and he said his expectation is that we could probably wrap this up by the end of the year. Okay? So, he had no idea what we were doing, whether we had looked at it or not, and what our comments were.
Right. So, green, so let's define green light.
Yellow light.
So, so, well, yeah, there's, after all is said and done between the zoning board and the planning board, they'll go back to council, right, for, for, for discussion. And Sue, you're absolutely correct, this is slated to try to be finished by the end of the year.
So can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Picking back up, not just a little bit with the Board of Adjustments, so any comments that the Board of Adjustments have is not, are not, are not related?
So, no. My understanding is that there were, so, so we put this together, so this was a collective effort, right? So we put this together with input, Mr. Ryan was part of that. Mr. Schultz took that back to his board. My understanding is he did get some input for updating or change, and now it's our turn to add to that. The committee will collectively go back, look at all that, and if we have to come back again, we will, but, yeah, this is.
No, I just, that was my personality.
Yep.
But we would want to see their comments. We would want to see what their comments are.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'm right, I'm a check here. I was at the Board of Adjustment meeting when we reviewed these documents, and all board members were in favor of it, and I don't know that it took a specific vote, but when I left the meeting, everybody was happy with what we were doing, and I thought Mr. Schultz was as well, so I, I, I had flies in the face of what you just said.
So just let me clarify, though.
And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, no, just let me try to clarify, maybe, or were they okay with the process moving forward, or did they already look at this and have comments, or?
Everyone, as I, as far as I know, reviewed all the documents, said they were happy with it and that it should move forward.
They want to make that.
And I think that's reflected in the minutes of the Board of Adjustment meeting, if you look at them, so.
Well, the other thing I think I would like to see certainly before I make any more, I have some comments here, but I'd like Karen to provide all of us with hard copies of the current, all of the current checklists, so we can look and compare and see, because I know there are things missing on this, I mean, there's steep slopes and things that are not on here, so, I know that, but Andy, you don't know, Andrew, you don't know that.
No, agree. I went back and I looked at an old application before to try to look at, but I don't know what I don't know, right?
Right.
But I agree with what you're saying, so I think we need to see them side by side and say, hey, there's some things missing. I've got a list of things that I knew about, right, but I think that's a process.
Yeah, I would like to see, I think it would be helpful to see copy and where all the changes are, rather than have to flip back and forth the hard copies of the documents. We could do that, I think that would be really helpful.
So, was there, was there any input from the Board of Adjustments, like, what you called, any other input from the Board of Adjustment and from any other members?
No, they, they were happy as, as provided, and that's, that's my understanding, sitting at the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, all the, all the Board of Adjustment comments are all in the meeting, are all in the minutes, Board of Adjustments meeting, so, which I, which I have a copy of, you can have a copy as well, of all their comments in terms of what they wanted to update, right, pardon, but.
Well, there are comments in there, too.
There are comments, yeah, but, but the intent of this, right, is, and Mr. Ryan, maybe you could explain it a little bit, right, when we were talking about this, right, it wasn't, I think the, the idea wasn't necessarily to go back and, and change everything line by line, right? I think you brought us some examples of, let's say, other applications, right, and we use those as a baseline, correct?
That's right, and as Mrs. Stedder said, she asked for the, like, a comparison, there is no comparison. We started from scratch.
But we would like to make a comparison.
That's fine, you can do that, but you'll have to make your own, because we didn't, we didn't revise the old application and the checklist, we started fresh, and put everything that was.
So you take the old application forms and take this off?
No, we did not.
So there is no, what you took off or what you didn't do there?
Because it was so, it was so voluminous, the, the other checklist, and it was just , it was a nightmare, so we decided, let's take a fresh look at this, take a fresh start and just fill it up from the beginning. And, but it does encompass and embody all the necessary, in terms of completeness of it. But remember, completeness doesn't confer any approvals or any opinions about the merits of the application, it's simply, it's a ministry of the process to get, it's between me and Karen to get the application ready for board members to take order, and that's it. Then all the deliberations start, and, and we try to make it so that we don't get the return after return when people don't understand the process, they come in for five minutes here, we can be in a meeting, and then they can send them away, and we give them that. So we try to avoid those things.
The other thing I'd like to see, I'd like to have simply Liz comment, Liz comment on it, and hopefully that, if she'll be here, or Kate, you'll be here after you review it, but there is one thing that's glaring on here that, that I don't see, and on the application, there needs to be a paragraph where the applicant provides permission for the board members to go on the property, okay? That's absolutely necessary.
Why is that necessary?
Because there were instances where we were not permitted to go on the property, and if you're going to review an application, you better know that property, okay? You better walk that property, you better go back there and see the trees that are in the back, or the steep slopes, or the. You better walk that property, you better go back there and see the trees that are in the back, or the steep slopes, or the drainage pit, or whatever.
Yeah, that's a separate document, that would be part of the application package. Mr. Schultz is going to prepare instructions, she, if you remember.
I do, I do remember talking about that.
He's going to prepare an overview of the process and the procedures and instructions.
All right.
And then these other, these other peripheral documents, just like the escrow agreements and right to entry, those are all separate documents. And it's fine.
And maybe we could get that whole package, okay? Maybe Karen could provide that whole package. The current applications, the Board of Adjustment minutes, and all those other documents that are part of the application.
And the needed privileges that you were referring to.
I'm seeing the first, I like that. I, I mean, I have similar things, signatory papers, the first thing to jump out would be an affirmation. Another question is, is the cover sheet meant to be a separate document as well, that Karen does now? It's got the escrow, it's got everything else on it. The only reason I ask is because, for example, the type of application, it shows up three times in the same document. Every kind of cover sheet on it, it shows up on first page, second page, cover sheet, really hit it three times. Just that kind of thing, I've got the minimums, they go through, it's just that kind of little, but the signatory pages to make.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I have some other things, but we'll, we'll go over them when you do all these things.
This has been for a homeowner as well, right? Not with an attorney or not with anybody. I think that they should maybe gloss over it. Some people know where those things are, like you're going to try to make these, which we're in one. I know some of this stuff is improved lack of, that folks already there, is it improvement? Or is this going to add it as improvement? Some, some residential properties that two point yards, so they have setbacks, you know? And I, I don't know if it's all going to be encompassed in these documents, but.
I just think there's a lot. Something that expresses that there's permission for an adjacent resident to get access to the vendors for the service in that property. For things like getting a power line pulled down or something like that. I think you would have to ask the permit side of it, so I don't know how they would find that out.
Of what?
Vanessa, you have a funny face, I think she was.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
So we, we give a green light, and we say, go ahead, perform the construction. And then consequences of the construction affect a neighbor's adjacent property. For example, I have one on my street, there's a power line here pulled down from a neighboring house. There's no, there's no way for them to identify who the vendor was, maybe because the truck wasn't labeled.
Or whatever.
But there's, there had, there needs to be privileges for that adjacent homeowner to be able to identify who was permitted to perform construction on the job.
That's not us, that's the construction owners.
That's not like the board's jurisdiction.
Okay, okay.
And the jurisdiction of these kind of places in application.
Also surrounding, this is surrounding property owners. Five hundred feet, two hundred feet, thousand feet. And, and there was, you wanted first floor, you wanted, what did I say? You wanted that, the floor plan on the first floor, why not the second, third, and fourth floor of the estate?
So you're asking, you're asking for, in, to include a plan that shows surrounding properties? How much, how much?
Yeah, you have.
It says, it says in the checklist for variance applications, it does, it does say for all property.
Wait, so to clarify, you know, I think just, just to be sure, give everyone, you know, when we say the two different checklists. So there's one, there's two different packets here that Karen provided tonight, so everyone, just so everyone's clear. The one is for subdivision and site plan review. This can be either for the planning board or the zoning board. These are your non-homeowner, let's call it, applications. Then there's the application for variance relief, Morris Plains Zoning Board of Adjustment. And that is what is for the homeowner application. And clearly, you know, as makes sense, this one is a lot more simple. It doesn't have as many of the requirements on it. So I think we, but they, but you know, typically, a lot of them are the same, but I think if we're making some kind of comments today, I think we just want to make sure that we're, which, which packet we're speaking about tonight.
Well, maybe we should put that on there, homeowner or?
Well, very, an application for variance relief zoning board of adjustment. It's hard to, in my experience, which is what I've spent in other municipalities, it's hard to say just that, because sometimes it's not a homeowner. It's a, it's a C var, it's a C or D variance application that does not have a site plan associated with it. Like, for example, it can be for F A O or something like that, but it's, so yeah, I think you want to, I think this is clear, application for variance relief zoning board of adjustment, something like that, but yes, that does, that goes to just kind of say that we just want to make as clear as possible, especially when making comments today.
And I, I think part of the idea too, when, when we were talking about it, is that it, to make it an online file PDF, but would also direct people where to go, right? So they would, as a whole, would even click, just for an example, I'm not saying this is how it worked with you, but the idea was that if you're a homeowner, you click, yeah, a homeowner, it would direct you to the right form, right? So that you're not sifting through a bunch of forms that mean nothing to you as a homeowner. Right, so just, just as an example.
Starting to sound like a DMV.
So, so let's, yeah.
Let's get our stuff and then.
I agree, so I guess my first question, that Mr. Ryden.
Yes.
Mentioned Dave Schultz was putting like a summary of some sort together, has he worked on that, because I haven't?
I haven't worked on it, he, he was going to do that as well.
Okay, so first of all.
Not in that vacuum, though, I still need to share with, for comments.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to actually see it, so let me, let me connect with him, and I'll get that. And then I think we get all the documents that we just talked about, the current application. We'll get the two sets, the new sets that we have.
All those signature pages that.
Exactly, yeah, so we'll have to do that. And then we'll regroup, and I, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
No, no.
Can we consolidate, can we find out if there's other comments from the board, and if there are, I don't know if there's further comments?
I will be there, so I'll be back later.
Excuse me one second, I will give you a copy of the Board of Adjustment minutes that tells you all the comments.
So I understand that part, but I want to make sure that that's, that's all of them.
That is all, okay? And also, there was no motion made, because Mr. Schultz turned around and said that he would get back to the committee who's in charge of changing it. So technically, the way I read it is that the committee are the ones that we have to get back to, who didn't, the committee.
So I could take, with all the board minutes, and I could hide that.
I'll, I'll give everybody a copy. I'll email everyone a copy tomorrow. How about us making hard copies? Oh, sure.
Yeah, of the whole package.
Of what whole package?
Of.
The current, the current, we'll talk, we'll talk, we'll, we'll talk. I'll, I'll get it, we'll, we'll, we'll talk. Okay? All right, so I guess, probably not.
Yeah, it was probably.
So, yeah.
More efficient?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
A bunch of questions too.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll table this maybe into, and we'll get the documentation. Okay? Okay, I think that's it for old business. So new business? Is there anything?
Well, I, maybe this is all business, we don't have our new track track.
You're right, we don't, I, I did the updates in April, the maps are all updated. Nicely on my computer, I just slipped one more night for the prints, I'll have them here by the end of the week.
Thank you, okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Anything else? New? Okay, I'll close that. Portion of the agenda, our next scheduled planning board meeting is September fifteenth, right here in the council chambers. Is there a motion to return to tonight's meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Close?
Yeah.